Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. It is my good pleasure to be running the meeting today as Commissioner Barb Weckman-Brackey is doing the good work of this county out in the NACO Symposium in California. So, thank you and hopefully you can hear us okay. Just want to make sure we're good to go. Thank you for doing the good work. Item number two, are there any amendments to the agenda? I did not see any, but want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Okay, they will stand as presented. Item number three, approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2024 minutes that were distributed. Any changes? And all votes will be roll call, I presume, today?
Mr. Chair, I will move approval on those minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Michelle, if you would take a roll call for the minutes?
Commissioner Wolf.
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Commissioner Weckman-Brackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Yes.
All right, minutes are approved. Item number four, recognition of interested citizens, always a fun part of the meeting. Limited to items not on the agenda in five minutes per person or subject. Speakers are asked to approach the microphone for the benefit of the viewers and interested citizens in giving a name, rank, and/or serial number. I am looking around and I think we don't see anyone specific for this, so we're going to skip ahead to item number five, 5.1, looking to, you know what, I'm just going to let Commissioner Ulrich introduce item number five and 5.1, if you will.
This item is for Janet Williams. You don't need to stand.
Not yet, but get ready. Get ready.
We are going to proclaim a day, Janet Williams Day. The day is going to be coming soon and it's the 13th of this month. Here to honor you and thank you for all that you've done over all these years. Janet was born in Savage and has deep roots in the county. She's a lifelong resident and she heard the call for public service. Janet first worked as a social worker in adoptions and foster care. In 1969, shortly after the library system was created, she was hired as the first librarian in Savage, the Glendale Library. And in 1972 was promoted to be the Scott County Library Director. She served in that capacity for 30 years. During her tenure, she ran all seven of the libraries. She helped build many of them, four of them. After retiring, she continued public service by running for and being elected to the Savage City Council in 2004. She served one term and in 2008 was elected the first woman mayor in Savage. Janet is a leader known for partnership and collaboration and I saw that firsthand for all the time of scale. I was thinking of calling you the glue that held it together, but when we get older, we shouldn't refer to ourselves as being glue, I suppose. You are the pillar of scale. She's a longstanding member of the Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency, SCALE, created in 2003, and continues to be a leader of this collaborative effort, one of the key leaders. And she's past chair of SCALE. Janet was one of the elected officials who visited all the cities to promote discussions on land use and the First Stop Shop, which is a really great endeavor that puts our best foot forward to developers and helps attract them to our community. And so, it's a key thing that she was part of in developing our business community. She really felt, and I think all of us felt, if one community is successful, all of Scott County communities are successful. One example of the partnership she championed was working outside of Scott County boundaries within the city of Burnsville in Dakota County to move the Trunk Highway 13 corridor forward. And we went to Washington together and lobbied for many of those projects. Janet's public service has been recognized through several awards, including Scott County's Joseph F. Reese Award in 1996 and the League of Minnesota Cities CC Ludwig Award in 2022. An excellent career and excellent service to the community. And so, it's my honor and privilege to read this Resolution Number 2024-303 proclaiming December 13th, 2024, Janet Williams Day in Scott County. Whereas Janet Williams is a lifelong resident and public servant of Scott County, and whereas in 1969 Janet Williams became the first librarian of the Savage Glendale Library, and whereas in 1972 Janet Williams became the Scott County Library Director, where she served for 30 years, and whereas in 2004 Janet was elected to the Savage City Council, and whereas in 2008 Janet was elected the first woman mayor in Savage, and whereas Janet Williams is a longstanding member of the Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency, and whereas Janet Williams has worked to improve the Trunk Highway 13 corridor, and whereas Janet Williams is a tireless advocate for those living with mental illness, which is shown through her involvement on the Scott County Mental Health, the Local Advisory Council, and the National Alliance of Mental Illness, NAMI, as well as her support for the intensive residential treatment center in Savage, which was really a groundbreaking facility to be developed in Savage. And she helped shepherd guide that through in Savage. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in and for the County of Scott, Minnesota hereby proclaim that December 13th, 2024 is Janet Williams Day in Scott County.
Well, this is very emotional and it was a complete surprise. I mean, I was mandated to be at this meeting, but I didn't know what it was for until I walked in the door. Well, actually, until I was here for a little while. So, as I look at my years, you know, it was 32 years with the county and 21 in the city. Now, it's like 53 years of public service and I enjoyed every minute of it. And I, for anybody to love coming to work every day because you love your jobs, whether it's elected official and/or the other work with the county, it was, it's always been about the best thing you could ever ask for. So, Scott County and of course, the city of Savage have always had a special place in my heart. I lived here my whole life. And so, this is really an honor. I really appreciate and thank you.
Chair, I'll second that.
No, that's okay.
And while we have you here, I heard something. I just, while you're right here, I might as well just ask, is it true that your likeness is going up on the water tower and displacing the, I don't know, I don't, I just, does that just mean?
Oh, we got everything else on the new one. You know, we've been putting Minnesota on there, so.
All right, did we have a motion?
Well, I think the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, okay. So, we have this action. We have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I would like to comment, Mayor, that you are always open for a good cup of coffee and mentorship. And you mentored me when I was on the Shakopee City Council and here on the, as a Scott County Commissioner. So, I appreciate everything.
Well, thank you. I know we've had our cups of coffee and I have with a lot of other women elected officials in Scott County too, because, you know, all the years that I was on the Savage, as the mayor of Savage, we've had, we had three people, three women on the Savage City Council. And of course, people who know me, I always say that women think differently. I'm not saying we think better than men. I'm just saying that we do think differently. And so, we look at things in a little different way. And so, I think that's a good thing. And I do enjoy working with all the other elected women in the county because I've heard from them all. But we need that camaraderie. That's really important and it's all part of networking. So, thank you.
So, I heard the mayor says, "Think differently." I'm married. I'm going to say, "Think smarter." I'll just say it.
Doesn't your wife think differently?
And smarter.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I say something?
Please.
Thank you. Mayor Williams, I'm sorry I'm not there today, but I'll be, I'll be present to celebrate you next week at SCALE. I just want to thank you so much for choosing public service. Of course, your time as mayor, but all the rest that you've done and as Commissioner Brennan said, the mentoring, being a role model, being a role model not only as an elected official, but as an engaged community citizen, as a mother, all those things are important in life. So, thank you. We should celebrate you for many days.
Well, thank you.
Especially we will on Janet Williams Day in Scott County. So, thank you.
Well, then I'm a wife too, and my husband has supported me through all this too. In fact, he's the one who told me I had a job, needed a job after I retired from Scott County. So, this is 21 years later, so. Thank you. And of course, I was in SCALE. I mean, I think probably John Ulrich, Jim, John Ulrich and I are probably the two charter members and/or whatever, because when I was first elected on the council, the mayor at that time didn't want to be involved. He was too busy. So, I attended the meetings and just continued doing it.
I feel like there's going to be a special jacket coming for that.
Okay.
Members, I don't know. Just throwing it out there. Anyone else? We can do a little, is there any? Yes, yes. Oh, yeah, we haven't voted. That was just the discussion. Michelle, take it away.
Commissioner Wolf.
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan, yes. Commissioner Weckman-Brackey.
Yes.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Yes.
Be it resolved. Awesome. All right, we're going to take a quick picture. Okay, we're going to move on to item number six. We're going to recognize a volunteer Aztec dance program. And I read this section three or four times to see if we needed to. Because I was like, I don't know. Here we come. All right. Leslie, our administrator's going to kick us off.
So, I am going to kick this off, Commissioners. This is kind of a really fun RBA for me. We have, I think, a couple of things that really hit Scott County and what we are talking about here today. First off, we have really tried to get people to utilize the government center, right? It's owned by the county. It's owned by the folks. We've opened up our conference rooms. We've opened up space. And one of our staff, Elba Castillo.
Right here.
Right here, talked to Troy and I about the opportunity to use a conference room because she volunteers for youth in our community to do a pretty neat dance that you're going to see today and to teach these children. And they had no space. And so, Troy and Brian, I think Brian was here somewhere, facilities worked. We had a conference room and it didn't work so good. Ended up being the link, but they worked through it to provide the space. We have Elba. We talk about connected adult and caring adult in our youth's lives beyond just their parents and how important that is, that they, it's for resiliency and growth. Elba has demonstrated that as one of our county employees, a volunteer working with these children in this facility. And I think so from a volunteer and working with partners and opening up our space, nothing emulates some of our values more than what we're going to see here today. And just really excited for you to see these youth and what they've learned through this program. With that, I'm going to let Elba speak.
Thank you. Hello, I brought my badge.
Perfect. You're good. You're good.
I'm good. I'm good to go.
Yes.
So, first of all, I want to thank Liz for giving me the opportunity to have this conversation. This is something that I've been working for a while now. And the struggles that we had in the small community that we started doing, I volunteered to teach traditional Aztec dance from Mexico to our community. And it is open to other ethnicities. So, we do have some other ethnicities. Today, they weren't able to make it because they're in school, but we do have some youth that are from different ethnicities that maybe they do have some background in their family. So, this is a way to connect them to the roots, to the culture. And I brought this up in a conversation on a walk that we had. And she definitely gave me the support right away. I was very thrilled because I myself have been struggling to find the place to, where to rehearse and where to have the kids, the youth and the moms. We actually started just with the kids, but today you'll see parents also participating. The group is actually up to 25 dancers today. Not all of them are here, so don't worry, don't get scared. Only a few. So, I, we want to present two dances. I do want to warn everybody, we do have a drummer in the back here and it will be loud. So, if you are sensitive to your, you know, if it's sensitive to your ears, we don't check a person. If you have to maybe be behind the glass if needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
community. Thank you, Leslie, very much from my heart for supporting this community. And looking forward to continue to use the space so that we can continue to do that. We would like to, I would like to invite one of the grammas here to say a couple of words. There are residents of Shakopee and different areas in here. And I think it's important for you to just not hear from me, but also from them, what it means to them. Some of them have their daughters and their granddaughters. And as you can see, we are creating empowerment for the youth. We have Yoli here, who has been such a great support with the younger ones. And then, we also have some other parents. And we have moms that are come with their kids. And we have Mari come over and give your word.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for letting me use this microphone. Yeah, we immigrants for 24 years. And I am grandma. We are three generations Mexican Jolla dancers. And we are so proud of this and very, very grateful with Yoli because she invited us, show us our culture, something that's part of that. Even if we cross borders and borders, we're still Mexicas. This is why we're here. And thank you for letting us use the space.
Once again, thank you very much. I myself, if you are questioning, well, she is teaching them how she's, how come she's not dancing. I just came out of surgery not so long ago, so I am not supposed to be dancing. And that's why I wasn't. But other than that, the community will continue to thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. The sights, the sounds, the pageantry were amazing. I feel, I feel sorry for the next group coming in here after this. Chris Harder, you have a very tall order. Nice work. Nice work. Right, are you, are you coming up next? Wow, are we adjourning after that? Because that seems like kind of a, we still got to keep going. I'm looking at Scott County Delivers Group coming up next. That is, I don't even know, I mean, and we got a very, yeah, we're moving on to item 7.1. The topic, Adult Mental Health Emergency Services. Wow. Heavy topic after quite an amazing. Services. Wow. Heavy topic after quite an amazing display. Take a minute or two to get set up. Take it away. Wow, yes, it is.
This is a really, really strong Scott County Delivers, and I don't know how we follow either of the first two agenda items.
That's a tough task.
So we're just really happy to be here today. We are here today to talk about emergency mental health and emergency and crisis mental health services. We have a very group of professionals here to talk with you this afternoon. Really excited to drill down into some of the things we've been working on for some time. I'd like the facilitators to introduce themselves and where you work. And then Dr. Martin, if you could just do an introduction of who you are, and we'll just go down the table, and then we'll get started.
Tony, excuse me, Tony Winneke, I'm the county highway engineer.
Jennifer Schultz, Scott County Library Director.
Jake Grucey, Transformation Enterprise Services Director.
I'm Dr. Erin Martin. I'm the clinical director of the Scott County Mental Health Center.
Jody Kizer-Kisting, I'm an Assistant County Attorney.
Jeff Tate, Shakopee Police Chief.
Amber Barnes, Supervisor of Adult Mental Health.
Caleb Mann, Scott County Sheriff's Office, Assistant Jail Administrator.
Hi there, I'm Dr. Tanya Ward. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health and Housing. And I think I'm last to introduce myself, so can I quickly give a thank you to the folks who helped prepare this? So I really want to thank, I don't know if Mohammed's here. Oh, there you are. I want to thank Mohammed. We went back and forth many times with this data, and he put in a lot of hours. So I just want to, you know, give a shout out to him. It was a lot of work, and I also want to thank Evan and Chris. They have seen a lot of me doing this data. So thank you to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you for kind words. Could we go first to page seven, and then, Jake, if you would take the first question. I just want to point out that one of the, one of the community indicators that we look at is the availability of mental health services in our community. And this is data that has come before the board many times. Essentially, what this chart shows is the ratio between mental health providers and our population. And what it says in summary is that we have a growing number of mental health professionals available in our community, and that we have a generally on trend, a decreasing percentage of those mental health professionals who are county employees. So why that is important is that we really want to build out this continuum of mental health services, and that's quite a lot of what we're going to talk about today. And so I just wanted to point out, this is really the piece that we're trying to impact, is making sure people have access, not only through the county, but through community resources to mental health services that they need.
Thank you. I was worried you were going to take my question, because I was going to bring us to page seven and talk about the community indicator. So nice introduction. So for this community indicator, it is, it's interesting to see what looks like improvement in the number of mental health professionals in the community. And I was just, at a high level, what does, what does this say to you from your perspective relative to the topic today for emergency and crisis mental health? What is, what is the connection between what we're here to talk about and this higher level indicator of there are more mental health professionals in the community?
Sorry, I'm struggling to, hard to see. Well, I think, you know, as we, we, we're seeing the growth, there is a growth in the mental health profession, as we're seeing, but our population is also growing. I think as we'll see, you know, I like this measure because it does look at the proportion that we have. And if this could, and I'm not saying to do this, if this could be dissected more, because there are, there are folks who do outpatient work, and then there are professionals that do more of that intensive service. And I think that's where we're seeing the shortage, is that intensity, that intensity. And so that's really the link, I think, between the ones we are, we're going to be speaking about today, is really that, like, middle inpatient, right below inpatient, those providers. That's where, where I'm seeing mostly the shortage. I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in on that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, I think although there, there is a growth in, in mental health providers, I think the growth in need for mental health services has, has surpassed that. So we're, I think we're moving in the right direction in terms of the support that we can provide. But definitely a good point from Dr. Ward about the services that are needed. There seems to be a gap there as well, the crisis services and the stabilization support. Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we can look at pages seven and eight. I'm sorry, eight and nine. We just looked at seven. Prepetition screenings, and then repeat prepetition screenings, looking at the data in 22 and 23, and partial data in 2024. Looks like we're trending up in both prepetition screenings, as well as then repeat prepetition screenings. I'm wondering if somebody can talk about thoughts around what's influencing that, and, and just how you're, how you're addressing that seemingly increase in those prepetition screenings.
So I would say we're post COVID, which I think is how the world is referring. And we're in a post COVID time period. And I think right now, we are still kind of seeing the aftermath of that. During the couple of years of COVID, individuals were, of course, forced to isolate. Everything moved to virtual. And I think research has shown that in-person care is probably the best service delivery. So right now, with prepetition screenings, we've seen an uptick. Of course, to get background, a prepetition screening is like on the most extreme end of mental health. That's when someone's ordered by a court to be civilly committed, and their court ordered to take medications, go to appointments, things of that nature. So we don't want to, we don't want to civilly commit people. But I think just the acuity of mental health that we're seeing just continues to rise. In addition, I think, thinking of my coordinated response team, we are and have been engaging individuals in the community who historically haven't engaged before in services. And so unfortunately, because they are so ill and have been for some of them at times 10-plus years, we do need to go down that intense road in order to get them stabilized. So I think that's kind of why we're seeing an uptick, including we're seeing an uptick of Rule 20s. And I'm looking at Jody from the county attorney's office. So I don't know if you have any insight into why we're seeing that uptick.
We're seeing that in criminal cases, when an individual is determined to be incompetent to proceed on their criminal charges, then under the rules of criminal procedure, we're mandated to do a prepetition screening. So we've had a very steady number of criminal cases, but we're seeing an increase in the number of individuals found incompetent. So that's accounting for some of the uptick. I think another reason that accounts for it is that people are more aware now that there are services in the community. So they're accessing those services. And I think that's an excellent result of why we're seeing an uptick, is because people want those services. And we're just spreading in a positive manner, I believe.
Amber, do you think that's different at all for the repeat of petition screenings? Is there anything that changes that, for on those repeat ones?
I don't think so. I think my answer would probably be the same for the repeat. I think there's a small population of clients that we serve in adult mental health that are always going to be reflected on this repeat number, essentially meaning they get civilly committed and stabilized for a period of six months, the commitment ends, and then they have their rights back, meaning they have the, the option to choose not to take medications or engage in services. So we're just seeing that continuous cycle. And unfortunately, I think there is a small population of, that is just probably going to be for the entire length of their lifespan.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Tony. I had two questions. One, Jody, part of the narrative suggested this increase in the number of Rule 20s that are being requested by defense attorneys. Do you have concern about the legitimacy of those requests?
I think one thing that is important to remember is that the defense attorney develops a relationship with their client, and so they have the opportunity to converse with them in private and have multiple interactions with them. And they're the first level of opportunity to determine whether or not someone is really engaged in what's happening and understanding it. So I know that my colleagues in the defense bar take their jobs very seriously. And I believe that they are making those requests for Rule 20 evaluations based on their direct observations and interactions with their client.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other follow-up question to that was, when you, and I'm not, I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but in, we have made a lot of investments in mental health services across the continuum, have plans for a brand new behavioral health center, like we're continuing to build this out. And so what does it say to you as you see this continued increase in the number of prepetition screenings weighs against those investments?
I'm glad you asked that. I was, I was thinking the same thing, going back to the percentage of repeat screening. That's where I hope we will see a decrease in that number. Because I, with what Jody said, I, I think folks, sorry, I think folks, you know, concerned family members know that there are mental health resources. And so we are seeing an increase in the screening requests, either from hospitals, it's mostly from hospitals, but the folks who bring their loved ones to the hospitals are their family members. So I think we will see the increase in screenings, but I'm hoping that the percentage of repeat goes down because they are linked to services in the community, and they, they feel that those are helpful.
Thank you.
Could I just add on what Dr. Ward was saying? I too would think that our instances of repeated screenings would be decreased, because when an individual is screened, the case isn't automatically supported. And when we determine that a case should not go forward, it's usually because someone is willing to engage in voluntary services. And so the idea would be that if we have additional resources within the community, they could then get connected to those resources on a voluntary basis, and hopefully that would eliminate the need for future court intervention.
Thank you. Can I just ask a follow-up question? It's actually on 10. It talks about the average screening hours, so prepetition screenings going up, we're spending less time. Can somebody talk about that, or at least it looks like, and again, so the reason behind that, are we getting better at them? Are, do we have more skill? Like what, how does that work?
Yeah, so I think this could be interpreted a couple of different ways. One, yes, I do think we are potentially getting faster at them. But I also think the hospitals are giving us less time to complete the screenings. So typically, in the most ideal world, we would have 72 hours to complete a prepetition screening. I personally have done one in four hours, which is not ideal. It's probably not the most thorough. But that was the amount of time allotted that the hospital gave us before the 72-hour hold was up. So I think hospitals are really working to try and engage the person in, to engage in voluntary services. So yes, they place a hold right away when the individual gets to the emergency room. But within that 72-hour window, they're really trying to engage them and see if, you know, the hold can be essentially discontinued. But I think once they get to that point of, okay, there's maybe eight hours left on it, they have to make a decision of filing a petition or not. So it's, I think both, both things can be true.
And I think the hospitals are getting quicker at sending documentation. That's a big part of the screening process, is reviewing all the medical records. And so as they are seeing more petition screenings, now they probably have a process to get those records over quicker to the screeners, which then helps with getting the, the screening done in a more timely fashion.
Does it have at all, from your guys' perspective, like, just moving people through, so that, because there's not enough space and beds, and they need to move, like, make decisions and move people through? Is there any rest that you guys see in that?
I think there's some safeguards built in within the law. The statute mandates that within 12 hours of a patient being brought in on a transport hold, that they have to be evaluated by a physician or a medical, medical personnel. The statute defines what it is. And so at that mark, in the process, what happens is they're either determined to be someone that could be released, or they may need to be admitted to the hospital. They may be able to be admitted voluntarily. And if not, then they are placed typically on a 72-hour hold. So that's, that's a safeguard for folks.
On page 14, can you talk a little bit about this and what this is from activities and trends here? There's way less clients served in the crisis facility, and just kind of talk about those activities.
Yeah, so at our Savage Ertz that we heard mentioned earlier today, there, there is two classifications in terms of services there. So one is called the Ertz, and then one is also called a crisis bed. So they are physically located at the same building. The crisis portion requires a higher staff-to-client ratio. And as we have probably seen in our data, that's been a struggle with getting that staffed. And so they have not had the capacity to take those clients that require a crisis bed. So that's why you see the decrease there.
Dr. Ward, is there work underway to, to address that?
Yes, we have been meeting, well, they, they have new leadership, and we've been meeting with them fairly regularly to express our concerns and our thoughts and partner and offer ways to collaborate. We go through every case. If they, if they don't take a client, we ask for why, so we can troubleshoot if there's something we could do to help them, maybe accept a client. So it's an ongoing process, something that we're working on. And we continue to help them. They're also looking at, you know, from a, you know, a staffing perspective, they're looking at market value, market salaries, how do they attract and recruit more clinicians? I know they're looking at perhaps starting a clinical training program, which, I mean, a lot of clinics and providers are needing to do that. That's how we are getting our staff these days. I mean, at the Mental Health Center, that's one recruitment tool we're using to get staff, is to start them as clinical trainees and give them supervision hours, so then they get licensed, and hopefully they stay.
Can we go back to slide 11 for a second? So what, what does it mean that, to, to the folks at the table, what does it mean that the percentage of supported screenings is going down and the non-supported is going up? Is that, is that, do we draw a conclusion that that's real, that's good, or that's bad, or that's just kind of interesting? We don't want to make a value judgment on that?
Yeah, so I would interpret it as good. We don't obviously want to have to civilly commit people. So typically, if we're going to non-support a case, it's because the individual is willing to engage voluntarily, whether that be with case management, outpatient services, remain in the hospital voluntarily. So it's definitely a good thing that the supports are going down.
And if we look at the Rule 20 referral process, the threshold to be incompetent to stand trial is a lot lower than commitment. So if every person who is incompetent to stand trial needs to have a prepetition screening, that doesn't automatically mean that they meet the threshold for support. So if we see an increase, we may not always see the proportionate support to match that.
Where are those, when, when people are in that sort of in-between, they've been deemed incompetent to stand trial, but they're going through that process, where are they physically?
It can vary. Sometimes they're in a correctional setting, sometimes they're out in the community. Sometimes they're actually also in a treatment facility.
What is the impact on, like, a jail, for instance? If we have those folks in the jail who are in that in-between, what, what's the impact on providing, what you might think of as traditional jail services? That seems like something beyond what a jail typically does. So what's the impact on your work, Caleb?
Sure, we, we certainly have had to adjust as our traditional jail services change. We've been really fortunate that we feel very supported by the other parts of the county, and the Mental Health Center is a great example of that. Being able to, to really come to our aid, where we, we're, you know, we're doing the best we can in meeting folks where they're at when they come in the door. in meeting folks where they're at when they come in the door. But sometimes we need resources, expertise. And speaking with my colleagues across the state or across the nation, I feel very grateful to be where we're at. I just, I feel very supported by what we have for those resources. It is a challenge for our staff. It's a challenge for people that are incarcerated. And it's a, it's a real issue.
And on a statewide level, DHS is establishing a forensic navigator program. So to help individuals who are in that in-between, whether it be they, they have sites around the state that are certified as competency restoration states or sites to help with folks get med management or to help with education. Most people who are not competent to stand trial, you know, medication is really the primary intervention that will help them. There's a small fraction where it's due to maybe lower cognitive ability, where you can do some type of education to restore them to competency. And that's where you will see that at those community sites that DHS is working on establishing an infrastructure and a payment and a network system for that.
Yes, can I ask one more question about that? But just Chief Tate, from, from your perspective, when, when folks are in the community then, is there an impact that you see at your local law enforcement level?
Well, our, our number one call for service in terms of a medical is someone in a mental health crisis. So I think we had just 811 in 2023 were just someone in crisis, someone experiencing a need for mental health services. That doesn't include someone who, you know, a call where someone may be facing addiction issues and mental health homelessness, those types of things that we all know overlap. But yes, it is our number one call that our folks go on is a, is a mental health call.
Chief Tate, do you have any sense about how the coordinated response program, like what that might have saved you in officer time?
Yes, I've got a couple of cases teed up here for that question. I've been very passionate about the coordinated response program. And it's something I've kind of been asking for, for a few years now. You know, I throw out the 2023 number there. I have one individual in our department, in our city, excuse me. We responded to 85 calls in 2023 for that individual, okay? All mental health-related, 85.
To the same person?
Same person, okay? 2024, year-to-date, after getting our coordinated responder to work with that individual, get the proper treatment and services that that individual needed, year-to-date, we've had four calls for service. We've gone from 85 to four. That's, that's a bigger example. Just recently, even here in October, kind of bleeding into November, we had one individual going through crisis. 27 calls for service. We know that the coordinated responder is not going to be able to fix it just like that. 27 calls for service. And until he was able to get that individual, again, the proper treatment, services they needed, since that happened and that person's gotten those treatments, we have had zero calls for service. So the impact is profound. Our officers are hooked. They believe in, in this program. And the relation, or the partnership that we have with the county and the services on this, it is, it is absolutely, I think, an essential program moving forward. So the impact on our time, again, I'm throwing 23 numbers at you here. We had close to, if you count, transport holds and voluntary holds that our officers put on people in, in the city of Shakopee in 2023 was 358. Not going to hold a day. And for those, every mental health call, we really scrubbed, we really scrubbed our numbers in 2023. The average number of officers responding to a mental health call was 2.34. I wrote it down, 2.3 officers per call. And there's reasons for that. Our training, you know, is indicated and, and best practices that we try to follow. So when you look at that, the amount of time, the amount of officers that we're spending, if we can go from 85 to four or 27 to zero, that is incredible. And that's, that's something we need to keep feeding and keep improving on and working, working forward on.
Nice. Thank you for digging out that data. That was great. Thanks.
I'd like to just shift a little bit to slide 16, 17, and 18. So I have a couple of questions related to our crisis, mental health services and mobile crisis. First to Chief Tate and Caleb, it looks like a fairly significant decrease in the use of Canvas Health from both the jail and the law enforcement over the last few years. I wonder if both of you could kind of just talk about that a little bit. If, you know, did we make a decision to not use them anymore? Or is there something else that we're seeing? Is the data not really showing the true story? What's kind of just as interesting?
Just talked, this morning, we had our Scott County and Carver together, our chiefs and sheriffs, monthly meeting in Canvas Health came up. And I walked in halfway through the conversation, so I might have missed something. But I did, I saw a lot of eyeballs rolling and heads shaking. I don't think line staff, supervisory staff have a lot of faith in Canvas. And our officers see a better outlet towards our coordinated responders than getting something than the response that they've historically gotten from Canvas Health. So there is, I think, a universal, in the county, feeling that we're not getting a lot out of Canvas Health. If they don't hear successes, if they don't see it, if they're not coming out to the scenes, they're going to put it on the shelf and not use it.
I think from the jail's perspective, we've just had tremendous support from our mental health resources here in the county. It's been really impressive, not just in time, in getting there, but in providing a service that's valuable. We have open communication channels in multiple areas of the Mental Health Center where, you know, we're talking with them about what our needs are, what incarcerated persons' needs are, as well as, you know, an evaluator coming over. We also, with the jail social worker being embedded in the, in the jail, that's made a huge difference. And just making those connections and ensuring that that stays very solid. I feel very good about the mental health care people are getting in jail right now with Scott County Mental Health doing, taking care of that.
Thanks. But just maybe a follow-up, and I'm not sure if this maybe is Dr. Ward or Dr. Martin, but crisis, mobile crisis response, crisis response is like a mandated service, right? Like we have to provide that. So we've contracted for a number of years. So how do you, you know, looking at the data, how do you start to measure what the return on investment is related to that service? And how we continue to think about that? Do you have thoughts about that?
Yeah, I, I help support that contract in order to canvas. You know, it's, in, in terms of staffing teams, mobile crisis is one of the most difficult. You know, asking providers to go into a community, most likely a home environment, not knowing what they're stepping into. And so I think staffing is a challenge. And when you have staffing challenges, you have turnover. And when you have turnover, you may not have the most effective or integrated care. And so I think that's inherently something that all mobile crisis teams are dealing with across the state. In, in our conversations with Canvas, they promote a lot of their stabilization services. And so I look at, so when I'm kind of looking at how, you know, return on investment, I look, I really look at maybe more page 17 and that data. I know, how many assessments are they doing? How many stabilization visits are they doing? Because, you know, stabilization is what keeps people out of the hospital. So Janar, I receive, we receive quarterly reports. So those are the things that we're looking at. The jail and then the police department referrals, those, the decrease, those make a lot of sense to me, especially now that we have embedded, you know, so, social workers in those departments. And looking at the data historically, Savage was one of our, was one of Canvas' highest police department referrals. And that also happens to be where one of our coordinated responders is. So that, that makes sense that way. Can I take a peek at that?
I would say too, just in terms of continuity of care, the Canvas crisis team works with the clients that we see at the Mental Health Center as well. And we have open communication, and so we're able to work with one another. So if something happens in an evening or a weekend or a holiday or something, they work with, the crisis responders can work with the ongoing therapist, which I think is, is really helpful and beneficial for the clients.
And this is a statutorily mandated service for us to provide, is that right?
Page 22. Can you talk a little bit about the correlation between the two, between the referred and those that are served? And there's a percentage there, but is there, obviously, if it's either, if there's over-referrals or under-referrals, that, that changes that. But is there some benchmark or what is this kind of telling us?
I'm not sure we've set an internal benchmark. We might want to do that. We've been so excited with the data. I'm not sure we've thought about that. Pretty much at every meeting I've been at, I've spoke about this. It's called a conversion rate when you think about in the world of mobile community services. You know, you receive a referral, which we love referrals, right? Because that's a, that's a good measure of our partnership. So if our referrals were to go down from police departments, we'd want to look at that. Are we really seeing a decrease in mental health? Or are we experiencing maybe, you know, not so much faith from our community partners? Obviously, that's not the case. I think we all, we all see, you know, how this program is going well. But the served, I think, is a reflection of two things. Amber, jump in if you want. I know I'm talking a lot. Okay, so it's a reflection, I think, of a couple of things. So one, I think that our officers and our police departments do an excellent job of explaining the service to the individuals when they're out at their home or wherever they're seeing them. And so, and then I also think that when the coordinated responder is able to make contact with them, I think they do it in a very client-centered and empathic way that, you know, individuals then allow them to enter their lives, which probably is at one of the scariest moments in their lives in terms of they just had a visit from a police, you know, police officer. And so perhaps, you know, things aren't going great in their life, but they are welcoming somebody into it. And when you look at any type of benchmark in terms of getting, I would say, like maybe cold referrals, anything above 30% is amazing. And we're at 74. So that's, that's pretty, that's, it really is a testament, I think, to the partnership.
Great, thanks.
I'm wondering about, so you're in the second year of the full second year of the coordinated response program. As you have looked at this, what, have you learned things that have changed how you deliver the service as time goes on?
So the one thing I've learned, and I think it was something I didn't even really kind of think about, but when we thought about coordinating response versus co-response, where co-response is a social worker, you know, is paired with an officer going out in progress calls. I think Scott County is best served with coordinated response. I'm really happy. That's the model we chose to go with. It really does seem to fit kind of the culture. But Savage specifically, we have seen a shift where co-response is actually maybe more appropriate. And I don't really know why that is, but it does seem like Savage grabs or maybe invites their coordinated responder with, for more in-progress calls. So they hop in, hop in the squad and go on a live call. Trying to think of other things that...
And how does that land for you? Like, is that a, is that a positive aspect or?
Yeah, I think, I think it gets clients access to services quicker. So that's great. But also, not everyone is in that, in that space who wants services immediately, right? So I think having the crisis calm down, you know, law enforcement can leave and the individual gets, you know, a night to sleep and reset, and then my team goes out the next day. I think that's also appropriate.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
This might speak to your question a little bit too. It's hard to measure, but just the fact that the person is office in our police department, those informal conversations, those conversations with officers, well, you know, you could have done this. Or if this happens again, I never knew that service was available. So when it's Saturday night and you're not working, you know, this is an option I can use when I'm on the road with that person. So I think that's just been invaluable. It's been really important. It's made our officers, you know, rising tide lifts all boats. It's really, I think, been, again, hard to measure, but you can feel it, you can see it. And it's improved our overall service delivery.
Nice.
And I want to just, I want to commend law enforcement for allowing us to come into their departments as, you know, just kind of like this, the odd person outright. I think they really just welcomed us and it's really such a family environment now at a point where, you know, the coordinated response, they're on hockey leagues together with the officers. That, you know, they're invited to Christmas parties and things like that. So it's, it's really been such a great connection that I wasn't expecting it to go that deep. So, great.
Amber, on page 19, the data there seems to me like Shakopee, or I'm sorry, Savage is almost double what Shakopee and the sheriff's office are together. Do you have any thoughts about that, why that is, or is that just?
Yeah, just look into if you have any thoughts about that, that difference.
Yeah, so I would say one thing we've kind of looked at is what's an appropriate referral and what's not an appropriate referral. And I think historically Savage really utilized Canvas Health more than any other agency. And so when that switch made for the embedded person to come in, some of the referrals we get from officers from Savage aren't necessarily appropriate or there's different resources that we could connect them to. So I think that's some of it. Yeah, I don't know if we've really put a finger on exactly why.
They just refer more people than, than we do. We're going to concentrate hopefully on that, you know, especially initially. We had, we had a list, you know, here's, here's the seven or eight people in Shakopee that we are just, you know, frequently getting called to. And they might, those are the most complex and frankly hardest situations to solve. So we really tried to focus on the bigger calls for service, bigger issues that we've had in our, our community. Focus on that person that's 85 calls a year. And that's, I think that's just kind of how we shape things.
So maybe just some philosophical differences between the departments as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think, of course, we, we highlighted her earlier in the day. But of course, Mayor Williams has had, been a pillar in the mental health community in Savage, which I think trickles down to the chief, city council, officers. So I think that, that speaks to some of it too.
Thank you.
We go to page four. So yeah, this, I find a very helpful graphic that shows the mental health service continuum from less intensive to more intensive. And as we've been sitting here talking, just hearing like crisis stabilization, emergency response can feel like, I mean, the words say it, like it's a response to something, it's a reaction, it's an intervention. It doesn't necessarily feel like a preventative measure. But as I look at this continuum and read through the narrative in particular, and page three, when we start talking about what happens when folks get to AMRTC, to what, I didn't see it like specifically called out, so I'm just going to ask the question. My inference is a lot of this work that we've talked about with emergency and crisis response, is prevention work? Is preventing folks from moving into some of those deeper-end services, is that accurate? And then how so? How do you see those two things being connected? The work we're doing in keeping folks out of those deeper-end services?
Yes, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. And, you know, and I think somebody has a visit from one of our mobile crisis responders. I don't see that, I do see that as prevention, and I see that as, as an entry point because then they are identified as having a mental health concern. If they're not already identified as, you know, someone who struggles with some type of mental illness. But usually, it's an access. some type of mental illness. But usually, it's an access point, and then they are connected with ongoing services. So they actually might go down the continuum, or in terms, if they go down the continuum, they have a diagnostic assessment. They actually then go, might go up two steps to partial hospitalization, or day treatment, or any of those. So folks can move up and down on this continuum in a matter of weeks. And I don't necessarily, I don't see that as a reflection of, like, that the step maybe below wasn't doing good enough. That's how the system is supposed to work. People are supposed to be able to go up and down, with our overall goal of keeping people out of probably that last one, all the way to the right. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, that's good. Can we go to page three while we're in this narrative? Just some of the graphs that were included here, not in the data in the background. I, I see in the third column here, their cost to the county if clients meet criteria, and their percentages, and then their cost to the county if clients do not meet medical criteria. If folks don't meet medical criteria to be in those facilities, does that mean they're no longer in those facilities? Or do they stay and we get to pay them? And to what extent do we, are we a party to any of those decisions?
Yeah, so you're correct. When AMRTC deems that someone does not meet medical criteria doesn't mean they discharge to the street. They actually have, part of their policies, they can't discharge anyone to the street. So yes, we are then responsible and paying for that daily rate. I would say our case managers are pretty involved in whatever the discharge plan might be for that individual. But again, the people that are going to AMRTC are the sickest of the sick, and can be very, very difficult to place in community placements. So whether that's like a group home setting, a step-down setting, like a community behavioral health hospital, they can be very hard to place. Again, a lot of them also have criminal charges, including like assaults, criminal sexual conduct. So yeah, they're just very difficult to place.
Does that trigger, so the, the deeming not, like medically, they don't, they don't meet that criteria anymore, does that automatically trigger a reevaluation of their commitment?
No.
Should, does that make sense? Should that happen?
I, yes, it is, it is one of the questions I have been asking. When individuals are committed and they're placed at AMRTC, and then the medical director says they no longer meet that medical criteria, yet they are still under commitment, that is one of the questions that I've asked, and I've brought up on many work groups.
Can I just ask, how do you budget for this? Like, if you have one person or two people that end up in these facilities and are determined to not meet medical criteria, how do you budget for that?
Well, given this was my first year of budget...
Okay, that's fair. I'll save that question, how's that?
But you're right, one or two clients, when I, I did, I don't want to speak...
These are big numbers.
These are, yes, these are hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so for next year, we, that's why our highest, one of the highest priority lists we had for the session was to ask for that clause to not be sunsetted in July, because that, that will, that, that will cost all the counties.
I just have one follow-up question for the jail. So we're aware, we've been, all been watching, that the jail is currently taking in border people from other counties. Are they also accessing mental health services? Does that matter if you're a border or a not-border?
We, if somebody's in our custody, we make sure we take care of them while they're here. So yes, they do have access. We do see, it's a, percentage-wise, a much smaller percentage. Usually the counties we're working with to get, houses in our jail are sending us fairly stable populations, where a lot of our, our people are coming straight off the street, they're, you know, withdrawing from drugs, alcohol, just getting on medication, or haven't been on medication, if they're seeing somebody. So the, a jail population tends to be unstable. However, we've been working with the, the other, the other counties around the state, they've been very good about working with us and trying to provide us as stable a population as possible.
Okay. And then just one other question. When we completed the jail study a couple of years ago, one of the things was to look at, what are the resources you have for mental health that we could bring into the jail? And I think you spoke really powerfully to that a few minutes ago. We also talked about some training for the jail staff. Can you talk about that? Have you had the opportunity yet to provide training for the jail, for the COs that are in the jail?
Yes, definitely. That, that's a big, big thing. So our, our officers want that training, our nurses want that training. They, they see this as a trend in their career, and they want people to be prepared for that. You see, you know, it's, it's really fun to watch a new officer come in and go and work with somebody and talk, just talk to them for an hour, and then they come back and they're so excited, because they got that person to calm down, they're on a good place, and they're, they want to know how to do that, they want skills to do that. So, yeah, we've been very fortunate that, in both providing that at our in-service training, and then discussing new ideas for what those, those trainings can look like, whether it's just education on, on basic, you know, psychological concepts, or is it trainings on how to talk to somebody?
That's part of what that embedded social worker can do. I hear that, you know, more formal ones, where you probably have maybe hour longs, but those powerful drop-by conversations with the chief was speaking about, those are, those are in the moment, an officer or can, can, "Hey, I just saw this. What, what does that mean?" And when they can hear a clinical explanation of that, that really helps them. I think it increases the officer's confidence, which then will help the next time they speak to that person. They might learn some tools and tricks, but I also think it, it helps them overall feel more, just feel more confident working with whichever population they come across.
Sure, thank you. All right, we have time for one more question.
Nothing for me. Maybe it's because we hadn't hit on this. On page 23, the homelessness and disabling conditions. So maybe just, it looks like over the past year, there was a significant drop. So maybe talk about that. I don't know, since this is only two years or so, what it looked like before that. So what were the conditions that there was such a big drop?
Can you say which part you're speaking about?
Well, the total households was a big drop, and disabling conditions as well.
I'm not really sure what the drop is due to, in terms of individuals, because these are all the households that are on the list, and then the ones who have identified as having a disability, disability condition. One thing to note is that the serious mental illness is part of that number. So I'm, I'm not really sure, I mean...
Hi, I'm Peter Goldstein. I work as a housing unit supervisor here in Scott County. And first and foremost, I'd hold up that the county has made some investments across the housing continuum, right? And so there have been an expansion of programmatic opportunities that seek to really take referrals for this population, or for the, the numbers that we're looking at, to try to get them out of homelessness and into housing. So I think that contributes to some of this. We've also made some pretty significant efforts towards list cleanup, and trying to ensure that the people that are active on this priority list are having more frequent check-ins. And I think alongside that, right, there are opportunities to get people into treatment programming that might then result in them coming off of the list, or we might find that they were able to self-resolve their experience of homelessness. Now, I think what does hold true in these numbers across the, the two-year look-back period here, is that the vast majority of people that we're seeing in our community who are experiencing homelessness at the level to be added to this priority list, are folks that are reporting that they're living with disabilities or disabling conditions. So that has held pretty constant across this period.
And it looks like the percentage is pretty constant, like the two, the two data points move in tandem with each other.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Colleagues, any questions to start us off?
Look online, it's pretty quiet up here. I've got a few questions up, yep.
Mr. Chair, I have a question or a comment, maybe Dr. Ward or one of them wants to tackle it. But I actually, the graph that Tony brought up at the end is the one that I found very interesting as well. And I'm just curious, between the housing investments, the mental health investments, right, the, all the work that has been done in schools and corresponders, and I actually think you're holding Canvas more responsible, is my understanding, right, and getting more out of that contract, and maybe you can talk more to that. But the prevention work at the FRC, all of that seems to be showing that trend, right, downward of some of these, and has to be improving even our public safety numbers, when you look at those numbers overall, right? It's down. I know the jail's up, but they're not even our, right? We're helping people out right now. And so, all of this together, it's not just one arm of it, but it's all the work you're doing from prevention that seem to be helping in all of these areas, because when you look at your continuum, housing, economics, right, they all play together. So, I don't know, maybe talk a little bit about that as well. It seems that the big picture of this work coming together might be showing some positive trends.
I just, I would agree with you. That's a, that's a big question. I feel like that could be in itself one of these, one of these discussions. I, I know that, like, we have seen an increase in identifying individuals who have mental illness earlier in the onset, which is really critical. That, I think, our school-based services do that. The Family Resource Center is doing that. The Coordinated Response Program is doing that. Sometimes those individuals, that's the first time they're going to have any interaction with somebody from mental health. So all of these doors, like I, like I said, they are all access points, anywhere on that continuum, and I see that as a very positive aspect. If we can just identify somebody and get them in somehow, I, that's where we're going to see the, the best, the best outcome. And I think we've done a, a good job of, of changing how that looks and being comfortable with how that looks. It doesn't have to be a four-wall building that people have to walk into. We can go to them. The more outreach we do, you know, the more we, you know, we're there, we can answer questions. I, I've seen that, I mean, those are the huge, huge parts. I, I mean, I could ramble, so I'm going to stop there and see if any of my colleagues want to go.
Commissioner Brenner?
I just want to thank Chief Tate for being here. I know we've had a lot of conversations before the coordinated response was put into the Shakopee Police Department. And we've had a few conversations since that's happened. So I don't have any tough questions for you today, but I appreciate that you're here.
Thank you. Not really. So I wanted to follow up. Commissioner Leckman-Brecke, do you have any questions before I?
No, I just say ditto to what's been said. I think this has been a great conversation to help us see progress that's been made and identify some gaps and some follow-ups. I, I do appreciate that continuum that was presented and how many doors there are. And I do think that even that work that's on there is prevention work. So thanks for highlighting that.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a little bit, I mean, yes, it's a continuum. You know, we try to have tools that are like super sharp and like do the work and like, but not every tool is exactly, I mean, A, not designed to fit everything, so that's why you have a continuum. But I think the phrase was eye-rolling when it came to Canvas, and not specifically signaling out, but sort of signaling, you know, let's single, let's talk about that. And I don't know if this, now is the time, but if there is a tool that people are like, eh, been there, done that, or, and didn't work, or did work, you know, whatever we, like, what do we need to do to make, is that something that we need to sharpen, or is that something that makes sense? I mean, if it's a tool, we want it to be useful. So again, yeah, not necessarily going to get it today. Wait, are you, are you at an auction? You got to be careful, because I see an arm going back there.
I, I think that... It was brought up a couple of times about some of the workforce challenges that are out there, and I think we see that with Canvas, I think we see that with Guild, we see that with some of our nonprofit providers. And I think we have to pay attention to that and think about, like, how do we help make our mental health system work, even from the nonprofit provider side? Because we really, even starting out with the first slide on, how do we add more people and bring more people to the table, like what we're doing at the Behavioral Health Clinic. So I think you're asking a really good question, because if something's not working exactly how we would like it to be within our system, we need to go back and reevaluate and try to figure out how to do that. But I think all of our nonprofit community right now is really experiencing some pain when it comes to the workforce piece. And so how do we fix that systemically, not only in Scott County, but across the state?
Well, and also along those lines, you know, I've got so many notes and scribbles on page three, I'm not even sure where I was going with it, but I do remember. And then kind of referencing page seven, where it says, "The county has a responsibility to assure a full ray of community service for individuals with mental illness." You know, we have this tall task, and then you go back to page three where it's like, oh, zero for first 30, but, you know, if they're not medically necessary, that's going to change in July, it was July 1st. I mean, none of this stuff, I feel like a broken record, like, none of this stuff is sustainable. So, and it's not just our cute little adorable county that's dealing with this, there's 86 other ones that are going to be dealing with this. So the problems, the mandates and the, and the statutes keep getting pushed, 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 and oh, you know, we're not giving you a carrot hardly anymore, you know, it's, so, we're not the only ones dealing with this. Doesn't necessarily make it right. And how do we best push back uphill? Because we've all been to the Capitol on those different lobbying days, and last year specifically, it was like, well, yeah, 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 and it didn't matter the color, blue or red, or if there's another one, whatever. Ah, mental health, yeah, 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 we, yep, yep, but we're not going to do anything. Then you go knock on someone else's door, yep, yep, oh, yep, mental health, I mean, yep, we got these billions, yep, we do, but no, can't, no, no, no. It's like, huh? So, and so, I'm just getting, I'm tired of being tired, so...
I'm there with you. For the, I think for us who are in the mental health profession, you know, we recognize that mental health is just as important as physical health, spiritual health, emotional health, social health. And when the last five years, now everyone else in the world has recognized that without the infrastructure to support it. And I think that's what we're seeing right now. Now, I, I hope that there becomes more federal infrastructure, state infrastructure, that starts to recognize this, and there's some parity. You don't have to tell us that, like, we, we, we understand that. But I mean, if we think about any field, have you ever seen a field that has skyrocketed in terms of need as high as this? I'm not sure. And then the demands, and then the cost, and no infrastructure.
Well, and that's exactly it. You are the subject matter experts, you have peers elsewhere, and that, that's where we need to figure out a way to come together and make sure, doing a collective push. And sometimes that means, you know, we can't all get what we want, but if we're at least getting majority of what we want, is electeds pushing on other electeds, that's, until we get to that point, it's just we get upset and be bombed, and oh, this is such a bummer. But no, this is not sustainable, so we got to figure it out. So whatever help with you and your peers to help us and with our peers, like, we need to get this thing together.
I think the support with the CCBHC will be from, from the board and from the county has, will be tremendously helpful in that. Now, that won't solve the graph on page three problem, but hopefully it might help folks not getting to the page three graph, those higher ones.
Right, exactly, because it's, you know, it's...
I think, again, it's that prevention, right? And it's the holistic model, so you, you have a physical nurse as part of that, you have housing that's coordinated with it. It gets back to those foundational things. So when you're working with the legislature commissioner, I still think the prevention and trying to get upfront, when she mentioned all these different portals that weren't traditionally ways to access the system, that's helping.
Yeah, I...
Housing investments are helping. I mean, Peters made a huge difference. I've heard it during the DWM, and it's Peter's coordination of them. It's the investments you've made in disability housing, and in family housing, and other things that helped the reentry housing. You know, you have eight men who unstable, probably have some mental health issues along the way. That provides opportunities, right? And so those investments in totality are what make it work.
I, I agree, I do think collectively that we are, our little group, we're, we're doing a lot, a lot what we can, we wanted to make legacy decisions with some of that one-time money, feels like that is happening. I would love to see, just as a barometer, not as a, the end-all-be-all, but how other counties look at some of those areas, and not to prove or disprove, but to strengthen what we think we already know to be true with what we're doing, and just to see if those trend lines tend to, I guess, in a way, prove that out. Just strengthens our position in what we're trying to do. Before we end this, I want to see if, just since we're online, if you have Commissioner Weckman-Brackey any last, it's easy to miss you on the video. I mean, you, you, we, we can never miss you, but I don't want to make sure to miss a raised hand or something on the screen.
Yeah, yeah. No, I miss, I miss all of you. I just want to comment on something you said, Commissioner Beer, about changes, and especially with like the cost share for state hospital and things like that. I do think you're right about we need to collaborate with, with our colleagues around the state. And some of the problem with going to the legislature last year and talking about mental health, everybody did that, and everybody talked about the hundred different things we're doing, or all the things on this page four right now. And, and I do think, if it's, we want the state to not pass on any share of, of that cost when people are at the state hospital, we just all need to go there, and that's what we have to ask for. Some of our problem is, we are all over the board, and your question about budgeting is, or Chris's question about budgeting was right on, because if we're not budgeting for that county cost share, we can use that money for those prevention activities that we know are working, and actually start to see if we're having any, any true difference. But if we gotta keep, you know, a million dollars in a bucket to pay the state hospital for our folks who are there, it's hard to do that. So, those would be my closing comments and, and my challenge to all of us.
I have one last question before we go, but before I ask that, is there any other? Good. This is a heavy topic, big, a really big deal, so we're gonna end it, ah, kind of on a light note, I mean, nothing really. The question for the panel is, if any of you, and this is really not a big deal, sorry, it's gonna sound like a big deal, it's not a big deal, but it's a really big deal, if any of you on the panel has a birthday today, please stand up. If you want to.
I'll just stay here.
Okay. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your time and all your good work. We know someone has a birthday today. Okay, we are going to move on to item number eight. The consent agenda, these will pass in one motion. Eight dot one, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 269, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the City of Jordan for the County Highway nine slash Valley View Drive slash 190th, no, 190th Street Project. Eight point two, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 294, authorizing a budget amendment and entering into an agreement number 105 7672 with the, with Mid Dot and the City of Jordan for US 169 interchange project. Eight point three, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 296, setting a 2025 solid waste special assessment fee on residential, commercial, and industrial properties. Eight point four, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 306, approving the 2025 dash 2026 aquatic invasive species prevention plan and 2025 rapid response plan. Please clean, drain, and dry your boats, and duck hunters too. Eight point five, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 312, authorizing entering into a construction cooperative agreement with the Scott County Community Development Agency, the CDA, for the Shepherd of the Lake Family Housing Project. Eight point six, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 313, approving entering into an agreement with Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative for the Prairie Point Project. Eight point seven, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 314, authorizing entering into a grant agreement with the Department of Human Services for the Adult Mental Health Initiative and Community Support Program. Eight point eight, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 316, authorizing entering into amendment number two to attachment three of the master agreement with Canvas Health, Inc. Eight point nine, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 319, authorizing application for a Behavioral Health Center project grant, and if awarded, accepting the grant and entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Services. Eight point 10, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 323, authorizing expenditures of opioid settlement funds in the amount of $160,000. Eight point 11, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 324, authorizing entering an agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc., to provide communications equipment and services for the Public Safety Radio System Project. Eight point 12, adopt resolution number 2024 dash 326, authorizing entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Health for the local public health and foundational public health responsibilities grants. Eight point 13, approve renewal applications for Scott County intoxicating liquor licenses for establishments within Belle Plaine, New Market, Spring Lake, and St. Lawrence Townships for 2025. Eight point 14, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the 14 items on consent.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the table for all 14 items, any discussion? Hearing none, Michelle, please.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Weckman-Brackey?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Elrich?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item number nine, committee reports and commissioner updates, we'll start to my right. Commissioner Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 21st, we had the county planning workshop for the next year, and for stuff that happened last year. On the 22nd, I had a nice field trip, a, a whole day long, pretty much, to Newport for their recycling facility in Minneapolis for their, it's called the HERC, the Hennepin Energy, I don't know, Recycling Center. But I think they, at the Hennepin, they provide enough electricity for 25,000 homes, is that about right?
Sounds right.
Right, yeah, so, that's, and, you know, some people are saying, get rid of it, and sell the land, but I don't know where, where Hennepin County is gonna put their, their waste, but if they bring it here, it's gonna cost them. And then the WMO was that afternoon, on the 26th, met with Leslie Vermillion, our administrator, on some upcoming items. On the 2nd, the ditch board, we had, what was that, on Monday? And came to a resolution that there's a guy that wanted to abandon a portion of his ditch. Credit River met on, also that evening, and Cedar Lake. Cedar Lake has an issue with some garbage being dumped out and near the Doyle-Kennefick area, and, yeah, so they want to close that road down. So, this last batch of garbage was an entire truckload of, of garbage, and it's, it's pretty frequent, sometimes it's just a, a bag of garbage, or, you know, TV, microwave, something small, but this was an entire truck, they had to have a Bobcat.
Yikes.
So, they're upset about that. Then New Market Township met on the 3rd, they are talking, or one of their big topics was, they may want to take over their own planning and zoning over there, and, you know, so they, and I think as the attorney was explaining it, I don't know if he told them all the pluses and minuses, but I've always told townships, they can do what they want, if they want it, they can have it. So, it's not all fun and games. Then last night, the 169 corridor had, it's like a year-end wrap-up of what's going on there, a lot of good things happened with 169 in Scott County, including the 59, 169, 169, 282, and 9, and then the Bluff Drive also. Also met a few people, kind of cornered me and asked me about what's happened with the, the election, and just told them it's all pretty much been in the news, but they said we most certainly need a new election, because there's 20 votes out there that weren't counted, and 15 difference, and that could make the big difference, so. Anyhow, I'm glad I'm not making that choice. But then today, the Vermillion River Joint Powers Organization also met, and we went over the year-end budget and a couple of things we'd like to get done next year. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brennan.
Did you say me?
Yes.
Okay. November 20th, I went to the MVTA meeting. November 21st was the Board Planning Workshop. November 21st was also the Library Board meeting, Advisory Board meeting, and they gave a update on their summer activities. They had 7,400 youth attend 256 programs during the summer, and 91% of the parents that were surveyed reported that this, those summer activities helped their child to be more ready for school. So, I, I think the work that we're, we want to have see done for third grade reading scores is really benefited by the work that the library is doing. Oops, my phone just went off. Let's see, November 22nd, I attended the AMC District 10 Solid Waste Day that Commissioner Wolf has already reported on. November 26th was the County and Court Communication Meeting. November 27th, I had, met with Joe Faust, who is the CDA Business and Community Development Director, and we talked about the Center for Entrepreneurship and how, and if we can include some initiatives for solid waste businesses, and so, we're, we're having those discussions. On December 2nd, I had a meeting with Lisa Fries and Tony Winnicky. December 2nd was the IWG meeting with the Tribe Prior Lake and Shakopee and Scott County. And the Tribe, SMSC, was discussing the recycling facility that they're, they're opening soon, and I have a tour set up for next week, so that'll be good to see. December 3rd, I met with Mayor Matt Lehman from Shakopee. We also talked about solid waste and some things that he would like to see done, and also we discussed the Marshall Road, County Road 17th work. December 3rd, I listened to the Shakopee City Council meeting. December 4th was the Park Board meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Look to my left, Commissioner Elrich.
On the 20th, I attended the TAB policymaker working group, and I've expressed concern about the reorganization of the regional solicitation dollars. Verbally, we'd have different categories like bike and pad, or roads, or transit, and we'd have funding ranges, ranges. Now they're thinking of having categories like equity, climate change, safety, there's, you know, five of them, I sent you copies of what those buckets are. I'm worried that that'll get us away from funding roads, and then we'll, we'll walk away from our funding ranges. I, I said to Gary Hanson the other day, I said, you know, I've never seen it so strong at the TAB where people want to fund everything but roads. And it's, it's crazy, and the, the, most forms of transit rely on the roads, even for transit, so, obviously light rail does not, commuter rail does not, but virtually everything else relies on, relies on roads, so. So, then the TAB later that day, and then December coming up, we're gonna have a workshop on those, those new buckets and try it out. I think they're gonna get more pushback than they realize against those, but later that same day, the MVTA Board Meeting, 21st, our Board Planning Workshop, 22nd, Savage County Meeting, last meeting of that kind with Mayor Williams, a FISH Board Meeting that same day, 25th, the Legislative Parties Meeting that we all attended, the Canvassing Board, the 4th, monthly meeting with Leslie Vermillion, and then I attended a EJUST launch event. EJUST is the name for the new electric 10-passenger vans, or buses, that, that they bought, and there's five of them. And this micro-transit, and also autonomous vehicles, I think micro-transit's gonna eventually morph into autonomous vehicles, and I think that's really the transit of the future. I mean, there'll always be a need to express people to downtown, but I really think transit's gonna get more nimble, more individualized, and less costly, because you won't have a driver to pay. I think that's really the future, and it'll get people where they want to go. And, you know, equity is a big theme around the region, and I, I ask, you know, what are we doing lacking equity in terms of transportation funding? And I never get a good answer, but I do have something that I would say is, addresses equity is these MVTA Connect or micro-transit, is that a go and pick up anybody from anywhere within our service area and take them where they need to go? So, it's available to everybody at low cost, it gets people that don't have a car, or seniors that can't drive, or whatever, gets them a ride, so I think that's, but it's really the wave of the future, I think. Then last night, the 169 Corridor Coalition, I remember a year ago, I had not been attending, and I attended a year ago, and I walked away from that meeting, I said, man, what is the focus? What is the priority? What's, what's next? Because it seemed to be kind of a little wandering. Well, over this last year, the consultant has guided the 169 Corridor Coalition to a prioritization of projects, and they have, it laid out quite well with a four-page brochure, I'll get you a copy of it, but it lays out about four different clusters of projects on, on the corridor, from, you know, Bloomington Ferry Bridge to the Southern Scott County or Northern, you know, like La Sure and St. Peter, and then the Mankato, there's, there's clusters of projects along the corridor, but it, it helps prioritize and give a focus, and so, I thought that was a very good step. That's ended my report.
Thank you, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that, because it is an interesting situation. Yes, one, her, she's, she, yep, yes, yes, see, we are not gonna miss her, we're gonna miss you, yes, we're gonna miss you wherever you're in the camera, but we're not gonna miss you for this committee report, so Barb, Commissioner, Barb Weckman-Brackey, please.
Thank you. Most of the things I attended were already said, so I'll go quick, and I did submit a written report, just want to add, November 19th, we all attended workshop after the Board Meeting. On that evening, I brought a meal to Treehouse and saw their new space. Their new space is on Fourth Avenue in Shakopee, gives them a lot more room, they're very excited about it, so it's just fun to see a nonprofit provider that we're working with doing good work, expanding and, and doing more. On November 20th, I joined SMSC Administrator Red Nicky and Mayor Kurt Briggs, we presented about scale at a government IT conference in Bloomington, and, and talked about scale, and really talked about fiber and data sharing, and those, those areas that scale has helped, helped us do around IT. So, that was, was a fun little field trip. Had the, the Scott County Board Workshop and a community meeting the next day, and then on Friday, I had mentally ill and dangerous civil commitment reform task force, and I think that plays in, or connects really well to our discussion today, because the whole role of that task force is, once people get into St. Peter, to the state hospital, they're supposed to be there for treatment, and for some people, they do leave there, and we need people to leave there who can to open up beds to get people out of Inoka, that's just this part of the process, and we need to make sure it's being done in a way that's safe for the community and safe for those individuals. So, doing some of that work, I was able to attend the November 22nd afternoon of the solid waste tour. On Monday, November 25th, Leslie and Barb Doll and I met with Dakota County Administrator and Commissioner Halverson to talk about some of the things we're doing in human services, human services, especially around the Behavioral Health Center, things that are impacting them, and their, their things are impacting us to make sure we're communicating and not duplicating, but also working together. So, it was a good meeting, I came to Scott County for it, which was nice. November 25th, I joined Marty Schmitz to meet with a Blakely Township resident who had some issues around planning and zoning. November 26th, Chair Vice Chair, also November 26th, I had a call with the search lead for the MICA Executive Director position to talk about our thoughts, we're members of MICA, of course, and with a new executive director, kind of thoughts and things that we think are important. Matt Mossman has been very helpful to us several times, I know Leslie calls on him for data and, and other information that helps guide us, so we want to make sure that whoever is hired to replace him really can provide that same level of service. The 26th was also the County Court Policy Meeting and the Scott County Mental Health LAC. On November 27th, I met with Mark Fall of DemCon to On November 27th, I met with Mark Fall of Demcon just to hear about what's going on out there, what their thoughts are for the long-term future. December 2nd, had that Scott County, Rice County, joint ditch board meeting. December 3rd was Justice Steering Committee meeting. December 3rd was also CAP Agency Finance Committee meeting. And then yesterday through Saturday, I think you'll be at the NACO Symposium Saturday night. And I had my first earthquake warning come on my phone this morning, we were out at a reservoir.
That's right.
And there was an earthquake about 100 miles north of where we were at. We didn't feel anything, there was some flickering of the lights and things like that, but it was interesting, I'm glad we don't have earthquakes in Minnesota, and hope that everybody who experienced that is okay. That's the end of my report, Mr. Chair, and thank you for chairing today's meeting.
Yes, happy to do it. Thanks for doing the good work for us out there, I appreciate that, we all do. All right, so for my report, the 19th is what's mentioned, post-board workshop, as well as the ditch board. The 20th had a debrief with some of our staff with CLDI, that we went out to a field trip to Billings. 21st, again, talked about the 2025 planning session. 22nd, ditto, 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 trash talk, went to the RNE in the HERC in Washington County, well, the Ramsey Washington and then the Hennepin County. Interesting fact, well, A, a lot of things we're talking about are regional, right, or more statewide, and certainly regional at the very least, with garbage. The HERC, if it shuts down, they don't, they don't have an answer for, I think it's 200 million tons of garbage, where's it gonna go? The HERC, which is where everything goes, well, some stuff goes to burn, they collect more metal in the HERC process, twice as much metal as they do in the curbside collection. I just thought that was fascinating, that they're getting, so that much metal is bypassing the stream, and it's kicked out as it's being burned, so I just like, okay, so there's your, a big part of your recycling as well. So yes, preaching to the choir here, but we need to look at this from a regional and statewide perspective. 25th had, I don't know what we call this, a post-recount canvas, I'm trying to figure out, what's the word, if it was, what is bizarre and fascinating, if you put that together? It was a very bizarre slash fascinating process with the specific situation with the lost, known lost ballots, but really no way to account for that in the canvassing process, but it kicked it off to the, to the contest, to get it to a contest, which now the campaign has filed that contest, yes. So now it's in the hands of the court, and yeah, what do you do? What do you do? I guess we're gonna find out. 26th, Chair Vice Chair, 27th, MMCD. On the 2nd, must've been the coffee day, had coffee with the Prior Lake Mayor, coffee with Commissioner Brennan, and IWG, had a coffee there, it was delicious, lots, lots of good learning going on. Today, coffee again, with Chris Harder, and then I had a three-person policy meeting where we talked a little bit about some of the acquisitions we're looking at for Blakely, what that park might look like and, and how we fund that. So that will conclude my report. I'll look down to my left, County Administrator.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. A reminder, we have our budget meeting at 6 o'clock, a little over an hour in this room here, for those that want to attend. And then we also have two pretty big capital projects, their bits coming in tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
It's 169, 9, and 282, which has been, I don't know, 22 years in the works. They actually had the first amount of funding from MinDOT to build and could never get to municipal consent, so this is a, a big event tomorrow. And then second, the, the construction contract with the manager will come in for the Behavioral Health Center, and so that's the last of our ARPA funds, and that's also a big project that will be moving forward the middle of this month, so exciting things.
Yes, very exciting, awesome, thank you so much. Look down to my right, any need to recess for something fun and fascinating?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we do not need to recess.
All right. As was mentioned, we do, are we gonna provide popcorn? We do have an evening meeting at 6 o'clock, if anyone's, any of the viewers, we're on a camera we're looking at, please, if we don't have popcorn, feel free to bring your own microwave. 6 o'clock, budget meeting, we will see you later tonight with that.
Motion, George.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wolf.
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Commissioner Weckman-Bracki.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Elrick.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.